And then I will also say, Bill, I believe it was at the October meeting, when we reviewed last year's data outcomes and talked about our goals for this year. You challenged us to bring some results this year. You, yes, yes. And I know you speak for everybody here, right? That you have high expectations for us and the team here. And so I'm really pleased to share where we're at currently. So I'll give you a moment to take that in. I wore green to match our color coding up here. So if you'll recall back in the fall, we set seven KPI goals, key progress indicator goals, for every school in Collingwood and Oakland. We can't report out on the last two yet. That's the state standardized testing data, so that's as pending release. But of the five that we can report out on tonight, and this data is as of last Friday, so there's still, you know, five more school days, but this is really close to where we'll probably be landing at the end of this week. Of the five goals that we can report out on here, what you see is tremendous growth in progress and achievement of the internal goals that we set this year. The second column from the left is the outcome from last year. The middle column is the goal we set this year based on that historic data. And then you see in the final column, the current status of where we stand presently. And so you see, in many instances, we exceeded our goals from, well, the goals that we set. We exceeded our outcomes from last year, or we came darn, darn close in terms of percent tardy. I want to just particularly call out the seven percentage points growth of DIBELS outcomes. I'm noticing a typo as I'm speaking. That says K through two DIBELS. That's actually a K through five. Sixty-two percent was the outcome last year and sixty-nine percent this year. So seven percentage points school-wide increase across K five, so I'll fix my typo. So that is particularly exciting. In schools, we get excited when there's like two or three percentage points growth in years. This is double that. And then I will also just say that this is not a guarantee. I think your challenge, Bill, was particularly around state standardized test results. So this is obviously not a guarantee or predictor of what that July data is going to say. But it's incredibly directionally encouraging from my perspective. When you have strong attendance, when you have few students who are late, when you have few students who are suspended, and you have kids who are growing rapidly as readers, that is usually a good sign of other things to come. And so we will see what that data looks like in July and open it anxiously when it comes into our inbox. But I would say that this, to me, is predictive of continued progress here in Oakland. So that's all from me, but I will obviously take questions, or I'm sure Jen will as well, if I can put her on the spot. Or Fred, is there anything else you want to chime in with? Questions from the board?
Can you remind me what the acronym stands for for DIBELS?
Dynamic Indicator of Basic Learning Essentials or something to that effect. Certainly. That's our K through five universal screener for reading.
It's our K through five reading universal screener, so it's the three times a year reading assessment that all kids take, K five.
So when we meet with the teacher and they're saying, ah, they're at a letter U or a letter whatever, it's based on the result of some standardized validated test called DIBELS, but it's reading.
The letters that you're referring to are F and P levels of reading progress, which is the system that we were using previously in Collingwood and Oakland that we are shifting away from as we further incorporate science of reading practices. This would be sort of like a Lexile level or a, like a performance band, a color band, that I'd be happy to like show you an offline conversation further about that.
Thank you.
Regarding the NJSLA pending in July release, will there be a report like this on the website that will show overall averages on the NJSLA versus the state?
Ultimately, so when the data first comes out, it's embargoed internally first. And we have to make sense of it as our group, we share it out with the district individuals, present it out publicly, and then once it becomes public, then yes.
Meredith, I'm just anticipating questions because we've had a lot of assessments talked about over the past year, which are wonderful. This is such encouraging news, first of all. Way to go, Ms. Bolden and your whole staff. But are you, will there be any report about MAP testing? I know we've been talking about MAP testing. Is that more internally used? Just wondering how that's been going as we get to the end of school year.
We would have loved to have gotten on this report, but because we started so late this year, we're literally just now getting the data. There were kids that were absent last week, so we still take it.
Yeah, one of my kids was absent last week, so sorry for the numbers. Sorry for the numbers.
I have a tech ticket and also we sell it to the summer, so we didn't make the spring bench work. So they only wish it was both measured for all through spring. Since MAP puts it into the summer already, it's early in the year, we couldn't do it anywhere. We started so late. That's been a long time. We're trying to see how we can pull that data back into spring and have a part of that report that we need to share.
Yeah, I think the thing, I think that you and I were talking about this together. I think the thing we're most excited about with MAP is when we do get NJSLA data back, is to correlate the two, because one of the things that we were most disappointed by last year was that our old assessment platform kind of misled and misguided and was overly optimistic in terms of student performance. And then the team reacted accordingly and allocated resources accordingly. And so in my experience, having worked with MAP in prior districts and prior roles, it's much more closely aligned to kids' actual current abilities and more closely aligned to predictive state standardized test scores. So I expect the same will hold true here, but we'll be doing that work this summer.
The teachers love to, we have to look at the data. Really did pinpoint exactly where they were struggling. Our LIT literally was pulling small groups of kids, maybe not testing, just tackling certain teams of kids that were struggling with staying still and trying to give them that boost. They got great data out of it, so.
So from a board perspective, we will be sharing data as it comes in with the board throughout the summer. During our August board meeting, formal public meeting, we'll do what we would have historically done this year, but because the data wasn't readily available, we always talk about looking ahead and so kind of like giving a primer for the community based on our initial data findings. So that'll come in August publicly, and then we'll have the formal district test report in October.
And I think that's great in terms of district communication and having it on the side and showing kind of a temperature check on the district as a whole. When would parents be able to expect their individual, like how their child did, so we can see? My kids would kill me for saying this, but if they have deficiencies and we wanted to carve some time out over the summer, because I know that's how they want to spend their summer vacation, but to like work on that and see where the gaps are, I think it's an opportune time to do so, and it's minutes away from their tablet and whatever else. Not that my kids have a tablet problem, but.
With regard to state testing results, that was a very lag, there's extremely, yeah.
The MAP testing that we're doing.
Yep, and so the team here has, as soon as testing is completed, the team here has the capacity to share family score reports. And so I can work with Principal Bolden on turning that around as well. And that I find to be a more helpful indicator and family-friendly resource than the, you will get a state standardized test score report in the fall, but it's a less useful document as a parent to parent.
I hate reading that. But like for the MAP testing also, in addition to like getting their latest score, I would be, I think, not just me personally, but on behalf of the board and the community, I think a lot of parents would be really curious to see that growth throughout the year. So like fall and then the progression. So maybe like a whole reflection, if it's possible, on some kind of score sheet. I know where, you know, however they do it is the tool that they're going to give us in terms of a report, but not just whatever last week or for Teresa's family this week's test. Oh, I'm sorry. Whatever those test scores are, but a comparison of the tests maybe prior in the same subject.
And just the last thing I'll say, if we could have, could we add your presentation to board docs? Okay, great. Any other questions from board members? All right, moving on to item four is committee of the hall. Is there a motion to go into committee of the hall?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. So we are now in committee of the hall. Does anyone have anything to bring to committee of the hall today?
Yeah, just a note, I was reading the Inquirer this morning, and I'm probably the only person in New Jersey that reads the Inquirer in the morning, but there's an article in there from one of the Pennsylvania districts, Lower Marion, Upper Marion, something like that, is suing board docs because board docs had a lapse in their security, where the public could access the private information for 5,000 districts across the country. So just so we're aware of that.
Right, so we can look into if we are one of, hopefully not one of those districts. Had heard about that as well. The only other thing that I'll, on Rich's behalf, who couldn't be here tonight, we would love board members to complete their board evaluation so that we can evaluate how we have performed against our board goals and talk about it at our next retreat. All right, is there a motion to come out of committee of the hall?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, item five is future dates and miscellaneous information. Not as many as, we are days away from the end of the school year. Tomorrow is preschool promotion. The nineteenth is fifth grade promotion in cafeteria at 10:30 a.m. June twentieth is the last day of school, kindergarten promotion and Collingwood High School graduation. I'll note the Collingwood Middle School graduation is tomorrow evening as well at 6:30. And then July seventh is the first day of the extended school year summer program. Item six is the approval of the minutes from the May twentieth meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, item 6.02 is a report of contracts. Yes, please.
Those of you that have been on the board for a while, you've heard my speech before, but this is just, Trenton likes to, I guess, govern school districts like kindergarten, right? One school district does bad, so everybody gets in trouble. So this is a mandatory reporting, doesn't have to be voted on, this is informational purposes. All the contracts that have been issued on your behalf during the school year. I bring them to you every month anyway, but there was, I guess, a school district in Mercer County that they were signing contracts and the board was unaware. So this is for informational purposes, and then I also place an ad in the paper as required by law every June about the professional services contracts. But this is just informational, here's a listing of contracts. So yeah, that's it.
So sorry, we should be asking for a motion for approval of 6.01 and 6.02, correct?
No, 6.02 is just for information, doesn't require.
We don't need, okay, so we can move on.
Presented to you.
6.03 is unfinished business. There's none at this time. So that brings us to the 7.01, which is the first public comment section of our agenda. Please stand, state your name and address, or if you prefer, you can write it down on a piece of paper at the end by Mr. Stotts. Please keep your comments to five minutes or less. The purpose for this public comment section is to discuss items that are listed on the agenda for tonight. And more general comments can be made at the next section of public comment in the meeting. The public's reminded that attempts to resolve all concerns and complaints should first go through appropriate staff members and administrators. Okay, moving on, item 8.01, superintendent's report and the enrollment report for May 2025. Dr. McDowell?
Okay, so good evening again. Excuse me, May 2024 enrollment was 269. Enrollment May of 2025 is 273. That report is attached. 8.02 and 8.04 are the school safety drill report and the anti-bullying report, also attached. And then 8.05 is a child study team report. Just a few, just acknowledgements and quick announcements. And so last week, we just wanted to say thank you to all of the community members who came out to support Alex's lemonade stand, Ms. Miller's class. This has been an annual tradition. The students and all the volunteers and the staff, they did a phenomenal job of working together in order to, not just to welcome guests and patrons, but to also organize, communicate, and then collect resources needed to go to battling childhood cancer. And so we wanted to thank them for their leadership, but we also wanted to thank our community for coming out to support their initiative. We also, just another, just a gentle reminder, tomorrow evening, we celebrate our eighth graders that have, are completing their time with us at the middle school. And then Friday, we're looking forward to celebrating our seniors. Of the 180 seniors enrolled, 178 will be walking across the stage. Students have earned roughly $4 million in college scholarships, and almost 170 of the 180 have been accepted into some post-secondary institution. So we're extremely proud of all of our classes of 2025. But the biggest event happening is happening on Thursday. At 10:30 on this campus, where our soon-to-be sixth graders will be celebrated. And one gratuitous plug, the best part of the ceremony, above and beyond the crying, the yelling, the clapping, the cheering, are the Oscars. And so I'm looking, I'm looking forward to that again. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. McDowell. Item nine is a business administrator or board secretary's report. Ms. Coleman?
Okay, item 9.01 is your May monthly budget transfer report. 9.02 is your May board secretary transfers report and all related backup. 9.03 is the listing of the purchase orders issued in the month of June. 9.04 is a listing of the warrants to be paid tomorrow morning, pending approval this evening. And if it's okay, I'll keep going. I'll do Mr. Tabey's. I'll do the finance building grants report because Mr. Tabey is absent. No worries, I got it. So items 10.01 through 10.06 are those items I just mentioned, the financial statements, purchase orders, and warrants. 10.07 is a resolution authorizing commencement of social media litigation. And that's a bunch of school districts across the country are joining that. 10.08 is a BCIP return of surplus resolution that's required with the Department of Banking. So Oakland will get $2,285 back, and it'll be used to offset next year's bill. 10.09, I just updated the Collingwood and Oakland purchasing manual. So as a best practice, I did attach it in board docs if anybody wants to read it. 10.10 is a listing of our anticipated temporary facility requests that's going to go to the county. And then in 10.11, along with 10.10, is the actual applications for rooms 218 and 219, for ones for small group instruction and the other ones for learning acceleration. Once approved, I'll send this off to the state for approval. This is an annual approval. 10.12 is just a renewal of the lease with the Pitney Bowes postage machine upstairs. It's year four of the five-year lease. 10.13 is our annual resolution authorizing me during audit time. Should there be enough money beyond what we need in excess surplus for the budget, I transfer that into your available maintenance capital or tuition reserve accounts. 10.14 is the listing of your school and breakfast lunch prices for next school year. 10.15 is approving Nutriserve Food Service Management Company as your food service management company for next year at a flat fee of $18,100. We did go out and use the state authorized RFP package. All of the related documentation is attached. 10.16, Oakland received the FOCUS grant. And FOCUS stands for Funding for Optimal Comprehensive Universal Screeners. Basically because you use DIBELS. I think we got like $10 per people. 10.17 is approving the interlocal services agreement with the borough for $13,000. They have not changed this since I've been here, but they do all the yard work. So thank you to them for not increasing the price for like forever. 10.18 is the summer resolution, just authorizing me on your behalf during the summer, because we don't meet again till August, so I'll be closing the books. This authorizes me to pay any outstanding bills, close the books, do what I need to do. And then what I'll do is at the August board meeting, I'll have a list of all the bills, so you guys can ratify. 10.19, we were unsuccessful in our reverse bid of the piano. So this is just authorizing John Longo to go on gobdeals.com to see if we can unload the old piano. And that's it. Looking for approval for 10.01 through 10.19.
All right, is there a motion to approve these items?
So moved.
Second, moved and seconded. Any questions from board members?
Yes, ma'am. On the warrants, there's a check in there for Camden County College for $5,000, which, as it's been explained to me, is for transition to college program for high school pupils not successful in traditional program. I'm not sure what that means. Are these kids that have graduated from high school?
No, so they, for a variety of reasons, we have only placed, I think, through Collingwood, a few kids there, but these are kids that for a variety of reasons just can't make it to school on time or aren't successful in the traditional high school setting during the day. This gives them an opportunity to go to Camden County College, and while they're there, they can get, they can finish their high school degree as well as work on some college credits. So it's another way for these kids to achieve success. Did I summarize? Hopefully I said that correctly.
So what it is, is it's a dropout prevention program in partnership with Camden County College. And so the thought is, is that specifically, it's generally for students who tend to sway on the older, the older side and have not been successful in high school, many of which have already been in high school three, four, sometimes five years. And so the purpose is to get that high school diploma. And the carrot is that by being on a college campus, being around older students, that helps to motivate them. And so they're taking courses needed to get their high school diploma, but they also have the ability to earn college credit, which is hopefully the hook for them to get to stay. And so we normally send one to two students per district per year. But not always, but normally we have at least one or two students between Collingwood and Oakland.
Okay, do we have any results? Do we know whether this program's working or not? The kids we're sending, are they graduating? Are they getting their diploma?
To our knowledge, they are. But what ends up happening is, is that they end up graduating through the state of New Jersey. They don't actually graduate through Collingwood High School, but it affects our numbers in terms of long-term graduation rates.
Say that again.
So we have, we have.
Long-term graduation rate, the graduation rate, I know it's 99% or something like that this year. If the kid goes to, and these kids, I'm assuming, are not part of that.
Our four-year graduation rate is roughly 89%. Our five-year graduation rate is 91 to 92%, and our six-year graduation rate is about 93 to 94%. And so once they start with us, their SASE, which is their state-assigned school ID, stays with them until they graduate or drop out. And so whether they are in a, once they start with us in grade nine, that starts the cohort. And so we're on the clock for four, five, or six years. Beyond six years, we actually don't get credit. It actually goes against us as a drop. And so the goal is, is for these young people to be able to successfully graduate within that timeframe. And then that data then comes back to our school district.
Okay, now you said the graduation rate was 89% or something like that?
Yes, it's based on the four-year cohort. And so the 180 current seniors that we have may not be the 180 to 185 seniors that we started with four years ago. And so yes, we're roughly 99% of the students who are on campus today, but the state looks at it from four years ago, who did you have then and who's graduating Friday?
Okay, it's a little misleading in that the numbers you gave us are much, much better than the state's numbers that they're giving us credit for.
Right.
Well, can I ask a question to that? The, say, you started with 185 and you're ending with 180, does that mean they didn't complete any high school or they didn't complete at Collingwood?
So not necessarily. And so what ends up happening is that there are, there are ways that students are removed from our cohort if they move out of the state. If they officially transfer to another school district because they have moved away, they then move and they shift to that particular school. But as long as they're assigned to Collingwood, they stay within our cohort.
So for example, if there's 180 kids who are supposed to be walking on Friday, but as freshmen four years ago, there were 190 that began as freshmen. Someone might have been retained and is currently a junior or currently a sophomore, but should be graduating on Friday. Someone may have dropped out. Things of that nature that, what Fred was talking about, it was when.
about, it was when someone moves and is picked up by another school, okay, that kid now belongs to that district. But if they started with us and haven't completed that four, or five, or six-year pathway yet, that's, those are the numbers that we're tracking. Typically, it's with dropouts or with students who are retained.
Okay. Can I ask another question on Camden County? That $5,000 fee, is that a flat fee we pay regardless?
It's actually $10,000. That's the actual tuition. And so the $5,000 is probably because they came in the middle of the year.
Either that or it's the second half of the year.
Yeah.
We pay it twice a year.
But yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? On a roll call.
Mr. DeMarco?
Yes.
Mrs. Vappel?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
All right. Item 11, curriculum and personnel committee. Mr. Schaefer?
All right. Good evening, everyone. Item 11.01, we're looking to issue a contract to Tina Rosser, who will be a preschool floater effective September 1st through June 30th. Item 11.02, we're seeking to approve our following 2025 extended school year summer program. You can see the staff and programs listed there for you at the rate as well. Item 11.03, we're looking to approve all general and special ed staff to attend IEP meetings as needed at the rate listed there. So for any summer meetings that they may need to attend. Item 11.04, we're looking to approve the following 2025 summer CST and related staff on an as-needed basis for IEP meetings, assessments, and case management over the summer. So again, all of the staff members there are, if you will, eligible. And you see the rate provided on an as-needed basis for their services over the summer. 11.05, we're looking to approve the following 2025 summer CST and related staff. Wait, is that the right? Excuse, there's quite a lag in my computer here. Sorry.
Yeah, it just went down again.
I realized I was repeating the same one. That's why we have paid. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so sorry about that. 11.05, we're looking to issue a contract to staff for need to complete the initial eval plan meetings and assessments. So you can see the staff member and rate listed there. Item 11.06, we're looking to approve the following school psychology interns as needed to complete the 2025 summer assessments at the following rate. So you can see the three interns listed there and the rates are included. Item 11.07, we're looking to approve Mrs. Mary Hopkins, school nurse, to work a maximum of four days for the summer at the rate provided there for preschool and kindergarten registration and medical needs prior to the start of the school year. Item 11.08, we're looking to approve the following stipends for the 2025, 2026. You can see the three positions listed there. Item 11.09, we're looking to approve the following substitutes and tutors for the 25, 26 school year. You can see the teachers, instructional assistants, secretaries, and nurses listed. Item 11.10, recommendation to approve a travel expense for some professional development that was completed. Item 11.11, authorizes Dr. McDowell to make hirings over the summer as we don't meet in July. Then we would approve those in August. So that is everything. So we're looking for approval of items 11.01 through 11.11.
Thank you. Are there any questions from, oh, motion to, sorry. Thank you. Hey, I'm new at this.
You're doing good.
Any questions from board members?
Yes, I have a question, believe it or not. The pre-K floater that we're hiring, is that reimbursed by the state as part of the, okay. In that case, I don't care about the other questions I have.
All right. Any other questions from board members? I will call.
Mr. DeMarco?
Yes.
Mrs. Vappel?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
All right. Item 12 is the school committee, community relations and policy committee. Item 12.01 is the report from the Collingwood Board of Education. Mr. McMillan?
So we've shifted meetings, so we haven't met yet. That'll be next Monday, but they, but there has been action towards the CEA's agreement on contracts. So it's not solidified yet, but we're hoping within the next week or so to be finished. And that's, that's all I got.
Thank you. Item 12.02, the PTA liaison report. Mrs. Rotondo?
Hey, everybody. So the Oakland PTA had its final meeting of the school year last week where they were thrilled to elect Donna Grabach, who was serving as vice president to the official role of PTA president for the 25, 26, and 26, 27 school years. Our current president, Lila, will remain on to help through that transition, well, for the time being. Since our last, since the last meeting, they've had several really nice events, Donuts with Dad, the Spring Fling, the basket auction was a little different than years prior. They did it in conjunction with the Little League, which really made it very successful. Therese here chaired the Red Cross Blood Drive where 25 pints were collected, as well as a lot of hard work and cool stuff by the fifth grade promotion committee. So really eventful month. As they close out the fiscal year, there will be a short break and then everything will resume in August, similar to the way our meeting schedule works. And they'll start planning for the 25, 26 school year. And Lila has asked on her behalf and behalf of the PTA that I share a heartfelt thank you to all of the board, Dr. McDowell, Ms. Coleman, and added that the continued support of all the individuals in this room means the world to the PTA. And they couldn't do half of what they do without us. So it's really nice to hear. And she'd like us all to have a really safe, relaxing summer. And I echo that.
Well, thank you. And I'd just like to say thank you to Lila Anduhar for her wonderful service as PTA president. And thank you, Ms. Rotondo, for that report. Item 12.03 is the OMACAC report from Mr. Tabey, who's not here. So I will, we'll hear more in August. Lots of reports. I mean, I do know that OMACAC is very busy this time of year with scholarships that they give out around graduation. So we'll get a report on all of that at our next meeting. Item 12.04 is the Oakland Education Foundation report from Mr. Schaefer.
So no update from last time. I do hope to have something of substance come August. So until then.
Thank you. Moving on to item 13, miscellaneous, there are no HIV reports from the previous month. So then the next item is item 14, public comment. It's the same as before. Please state your name and address. Keep your comments to five minutes or less, or you can write your name and address on that page. And these are for comments for items not on the agenda tonight.
My name is Arturo Treadway. I'm a fifth grade student here at UPS. I'm here today to present nutritional.
Much better, Arturo.
As a student, I've been here for over five years and the school lunch has always been necessarily a joke. Over there being weird things in the milk, lax substances, or mystery meat chicken. It's weird as fifth grade seems to be up here. So I kind of forgot my speech. But this, I have a suggestion that we switch to more nutritional options such as alternative milk options without dairy for people who are lactose intolerant. And it will also expose Oakland Public School to a more diverse experience, including students who feel excluded for being lactose intolerant or just not liking milk. Sometimes I really don't even want to eat anything at lunch because it's necessarily just bad. But we have to eat it every day because either our parents don't pack anything or we're late to school, couldn't get a lunch, and we have to get something from the lunch. At the fifth grade table before we got assigned seats, it was always like a joke about the food, like new names to call it, Mystery Slush, Surprise Gumbo was one of my favorite ones. Also, as a student, I have seen the food firsthand. And I had some good experiences with it, but some bad. I've found hair in my food that was not mine and also plastic this year. And which surprises me because there shouldn't be hair if the lunch staff should be wearing hairnets for sanitation and safety precautions. And this, I forgot this part. This decision or statement may not affect you, but it will affect the children of Oakland. It may not affect me because I'm going to Collingwood next year, but it is the right plan to put in motion.
Arturo, thank you very much. Takes a lot of guts to come up to the microphone. And I hope you pursue a career in the culinary arts because you know a lot.
So first, Arturo, I just want to thank you. I just want to say again, it does take courage to speak publicly. And it takes even more courage to have the receipts. And so clearly you did your homework. And so one of the things I want to share with you, as well as our community, is that based on direct feedback from multiple students this year, we are going to be pulling, putting together an advisory group of concerned parents, nutritional specialists. And we're going, over the summer, we're going to take a look at our food service, our menu options. And we're going to be implementing some of the changes based on feedback from young people like you that we've received so far this year. So thank you for bringing this to our attention publicly.
All right. Any other public comments this time? That'll bring us to our last item, adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.